Once we get started, this found out in magistrate court and city will be on his way in just a little while, so we have to take a break and get to some of the business items. I'll call this meeting to order and welcome all of our committee. Welcome all invited guests and elected officials. Are there any elected officials in the room? Yes, not, so thank you all for being here. This morning for our invocation and our pledge, we have Pastor Johnny MacBurroughs with Scott Channell Missionary Baptist Church bringing our invocation and pledge. Would you stand with me if you had?
Good morning. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, as we come again into your holy presence to give you thanks for the many blessings we enjoy, Father, we come now, we ask your blessing upon this meeting. You said in your word, let everything be done decent and in order. Father, you said in your word that the nation that forgets God should soon be turning to hell. Let not America be a nation that forgets you, one that honors you. Father, we pray right now for the health of this great nation, the health of this county, the health of the city of Dallas, and all that's around Pauling County. We pray for each one of us here today, that not by power or might, but by your spirit you will guide us, that when all is said and done, whatever we do today, bring glory and honor to your name. This we pray and ask, in the wonderful name of him that loved us, saved us, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor. Minutes, the January 26th, 2016 work session minutes, the January 26th, 2016 board meeting minutes, and the February 4th, 2016 special call meeting minutes are available for your review. It is my pleasure to recognize one of our own, Deputy Clerk Rebecca Meredith has received her master's education management development certificate from Carl Benson, so Rebecca comes down here in the front. I'll explain exactly what this is, if you'll base firing. The Carl Benson Institute of Government at the University of Georgia, Rebecca completed over sixty hours of ten defense level management courses as it is job related. For more than eighty-five years, Institute of Government has worked with public officials throughout Georgia and around the world to improve governance and people's lives. We all attend our training that's put on by the Carl Benson Institute, and recently we had them in doing some training that was arranged by our tax assessment, and they did an excellent job in management development. This helps government leaders navigate change and forge strong directions for a better Georgia. Please help me congratulate Rebecca Meredith. Thank you.
(applause) How do you transform me a little bit more?
Thank you. Thank you Rebecca. Want to say? (laughter) Tommy said you were all about smarter. Good job. Invited guest, we have Sergeant Ashley Henson regarding the new Pauling County Health and Resource Center. Mr. TV, Sheriff TV, that's the guy you see on the news.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you guys this morning. I want to talk to you all about something that's important, doesn't have anything to do with airplanes, or chickens, or even snow, but as you can see on the screen, we're here to talk about the Pauling Community Health and Resource Center. And I think that's something that we can all come together as a community and as a county and realize that it's something important for our county. Basically, what it's going to be is, it's going to be a one-stop shop for our indigent individuals in our county. They can go and get free or reduced cost healthcare, they can get other services they might need, whether it be substance abuse assistance, or whether it is in a meal. There's going to be a lot of resources here. At this time, we don't have a set location. We're hoping, we're working with Wellstar, we've got our fingers crossed that we're going to be able to obtain the old physician's building over at Wellstar at the old campus. So, we do have high hopes that that's going to come through. But I'm here to introduce a couple individuals that have really spearheaded this project and have a lot more information, and they're going to do a brief presentation about what we are here to do. But first, before I do that, I want to recognize individuals that are in here that are either board members or who are a task force advisory board member. If you would please stand and be recognized, and Mr. Chairman yourself, if you would be recognized, recognize these individuals. These individuals are not getting paid to do this. Those are people that actually have a general concern about our county and its well-being and the folks that can't afford help. So, that's what this is all about. It's about helping those that can't help themselves, because as you all are well aware, we have a high concentration of folks that need assistance. And so, I will introduce Mr. Gaskill and Mr. Greg Garner. They're going to give you a presentation about the Pauling Community Health and Resource Center.
This sort of all sprang from realizing that we in Pauling County have six hundred homeless students every single day, that sleep in a car, or sleep on the ground, or sleep with somebody, or, you know, stay somewhere, but they don't have a home to go to. So, working with this and looking at what Judge Miller was also needing, I've given out court, and Westridge has always stepped up the plate and helped us a tremendous amount. So, thank you Greg, and Guy, if you will move forward.
Okay. And I'd like to thank the Chairman and the Board Commissioners for inviting us here this morning to speak before you, and also the audience that's here today. I'm just here to talk to you about, as I say, and Ashley said, the Pauling Community Health and Resource Center. Our mission statement is, as a nonprofit public charity, to serve as a compassionate community wellness resource for those who are underserved and the most vulnerable. We are incorporated, we have our board of fifteen people, we just received our 501(c)(3) determination from the IRS, and I'd like to say, and just to shout out to our board and all the people on the task force, we received, we sent our 501(c)(3) application, and they received it, the IRS received it on November 27th, and because of the holidays and all, an agent did not receive it until January 4th. Three weeks later, we got our determination. This process can sometimes take months and months and months, but it was to the strength of our organization and the strength of the people in it, who have all put forth such a big effort that we got this so quickly. We will also serve as a safety net solution by providing resources and referrals to community and government services while promoting life skills development and lifelong wellness. And our vision statement is, we envision this to be highly comprehensive and sustainable. One of the things that we were looking at here originally was just having a healthcare clinic, but in talking with folks such as Chairman Austin and President Marquini at Wellstar and Judge Miller, it was decided that we should look at a one-stop community center as well, in order to continue the health and wellness of the people coming into the healthcare clinic, as well as vice versa, for those who are coming into the one-stop center, to look at the healthcare clinic as a stop for them to become healthier in this community. So, we have our value statement, which is, and we think that these are very, very important, and we adhere to them very, very strictly, with integrity and ethics, financial responsibility, honesty and transparency, quality, results oriented, again, sustainability and comprehensiveness, impartiality, and voluntary service and independence. So, what we're looking at here is strengthening individuals, which should make for healthier families and for the community as a whole. It should really bring a healthier community, if we can go ahead and help these individuals on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. Here are our board of directors, and I know you all have seen several names on here that you all will recognize. We're very proud of this board, and again, we will continue to have people on the board, and also people with our task force committee of around, I think it's coming in right around, right now, around thirty-five or forty members. So, this is, I don't mean probably to tell you this, but for those in the audience here, the population estimates and the plans here from the U.S. Census Bureau, of July 1st, 2014, approximately a hundred and forty-nine thousand people, population estimate space a hundred and forty-two thousand, and is the median household income and the per capita income over the past twelve months. The next slide is very interesting, because you have what they are saying as of 2014. Now, this is going to have changed a little bit because of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, Obamacare. So, there may not be as many people not having insurance as this would indicate, but the persons in poverty, eleven point six percent, without health insurance, eighteen point one, and then the number of veterans here, almost ten thousand veterans. And at the very last line, approximately seventeen thousand adults are currently not insured, and that was as of July of 2014. Again, that was a year and a half ago, so I would assume that that has dropped a little bit, but still a significant number of people that were going to be working to help within this healthcare center and one-stop resource center. So, as a healthcare clinic, we're going to be looking at providing primary care, dental care, behavioral care, and wellness care services to men, women, and children of all faiths and ethnicities in the Pauling community. Some clinics don't allow children, we will. Some clinics, you know, again, offer just very limited primary care or dental care. We want to go ahead and offer as much wellness and medical care as we possibly can. Certainly, we'll be starting off in a slow fashion in order to build up our capacity, but again, within a couple of years, we expect to have all these services being provided at the healthcare clinic. We're also going to be a free and sliding fee scale to supplement other agencies and medical facilities already serving the underinsured, uninsured, and working poor. We discussed having a sliding fee scale, which means that we're going to just be looking at, for instance, those under a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level will be coming in, they'll charge it all, a hundred and fifty to two fifty, at a nominal charge of five dollars, and a hundred and two fifty to three fifty, ten dollars, and above that, fifteen dollars. Again, that can change, and it may very well change down to a lower amount, but that's what we're thinking as having a sliding fee scale. One of the reasons we're doing this is because we want to be able to accept Medicare, Medicaid, Peach Care, we want to be able to accept any of those who are insured or underinsured. So, we want to, again, not exclude anyone because of insurances, or exclude anyone because of their age, et cetera, and that's why we're doing it this way. And again, the goal of the clinic is to be the safety net solution, help make families healthier, and thus a community healthier. The Wellstar Pauling Hospital does a tremendous job, but many people use ER as a primary care physician, which just then bogs down their system. They don't have insurance, or very little insurance, and as you know, even those who have some insurance these days, the deductible is so high that they can't meet it. So, we want to be that safety net solution. If they can't go to Wellstar, or their own physician, or even adopt in the box, which can be expensive, we want them to see us as their primary care. Throughout the process, many key stakeholders in the community and local governments have provided their input, Commissioner Austin being one of them, and so, these stakeholders in the health initiative partnership are very important as we build our resource center. The key question is, what are the necessary skills and resources needed for creating a medically and economically sustainable environment, resulting in stronger families, stronger business environment, and thus a stronger healthier community as a whole? And that's what I went to a number of people. I regret not having seen some of you up there and having a meeting, but certainly, at the end, my name and number is up there, so please contact me, and I'd like to be able to have a chat with you about what your views are about this. As a one-stop resource, patient counseling services, community education program, dietary nutrition, weight management, disease prevention, health maintenance, educational skills, other life skills, which my coworker here, colleague Greg Garner, had pointed out that we need employment skills, financial management skills, social skills, consumer skills, and parenting skills are very important, this is one of the aspects that we want to provide within the center itself. And I might add too, that the center is, what we want to do too, is be an essential umbrella that we can identify and collaborate with any other agency, nonprofit, or organization, government agency within the county, to make sure that we have them on our list, make sure that we know them, and make sure that people can, we can refer people to them. And either we have some of those resources within our building, or outside of our building, to where we can go ahead and make sure that these people are well served. So, there's not somebody that's coming in and we think, well, we don't know where to send you, or we can't send you here, we can't send you there. And one of the reasons that we do want this one-stop center is because of transportation issues within the county, so we want to make sure that if somebody comes there, we're able to go ahead and provide the services to them, without them having to travel all around the county to this place or that place. We're also looking at an independently operated yet associated community food pantry. Dan Purors is on our board with Kaiya Ministries, he has a community food pantry where he is located, but he would like to expand, and also include in within that more resources for clothing donations. So, he has talked to us about that. We're also, one of our board members, David Moore, Patriot Food 341, is working with veterans. He's currently very active in Douglas County, but he wants to also have a organization up here to be able to work with veterans, to help them find jobs, to help them with their situations, whether it's PTSD, or any other emotional or mental type of situations, also to be able to get food to them too. I know last month, that the Community Food Bank donated forty thousand pounds of food to this organization. So, again, if we can start getting that funnel into the community here, we can make a very significant impact on some people's lives. A possible community garden could be located next to the clinic, because right next door is, on the left, is the extension service, and they have a community garden there. So, what we want to do is try to go ahead and provide down the road, a community garden for people to look at this as an extension of the nutrition and wellness that they're getting within the clinic and the one-stop resource center. So, the vision of the community center is to bolster the area's economy by training residents in the basic skills needed to create a sustainable, productive working life, benefit themselves, their families, their town, and their county. Okay, so we, as you can see there, we're going to be showing a dedicated commitment to those it serves, by delivering the highest quality of care to the men and women and children each and every day. We're also going to try to look at the leading edge and working, leading edge technologies and top-tier healthcare facilities. We want to work with Wellstar in their CHINA report, which is their Community Health Needs Assessment Report, which they adopted two years ago. They have a five-year plan, all nonprofit hospitals have to do this according to federal regulations, and their next three years, which started this past November, is working with the community in terms of trying to better the healthcare and working on the community within the county. So, again, we want to be able to work with them on their CHINA report and help them fulfill that, as they also help us with their providers and their resources. We're also going to continuously seek new ways to achieve the vision of improving the human condition in the community. You know, we're not just going to remain static, we're also going to be looking at whatever we can in order to make the latest improvements that we possibly can, given whatever resources that we do have. And again, communicate with all churches, nonprofit organizations, the government agencies, to assure that all represented in the center has resources for the residents of Pauling County. What I have talked to, and several of us have talked to, a number of organizations. I know that one of them is right here with Kaiya Water, who is heading up the children's cabinet, doing an excellent job, and as I've told her many times, I said, you don't want to invite me to a meeting, because I'm always going ahead and trying to talk with people about doing our organization. So, she sees that every time I come there and staying after a meeting, or talking to a number of people. We don't want to duplicate or compete with any of the services already provided, you know, that would just be a waste of energy and time, money. We just want to go ahead and supplement those services. So, lastly here, Pauling Community Health and Resource Center will strive to make a positive difference for thousands, literally thousands of people in the community here. So, for additional information, you can contact me, there's my phone number, there's my email address, and again, I'd love to be able to talk to any of you further about what I've talked to Commissioner Austin about, and as well as, I'd just like to point out anybody in the audience too. So, if you are interested in anything along the line of what we're talking about, I know there's Kirsten Liberty over there, who I've talked to in the last meeting, please contact me, because I certainly would like to discuss this further with you, and have you help us continue to develop this very important health and resource center.
Well, you'll have Helping Hands and all these others that can do summer service, you're trying not to dedicate, but all be able to work together to provide the service.
Right, exactly.
And you have, take a moment, y'all visited, I know, several locations that you would like to be similar. One, I think, is Good Samaritan, which for y'all in the audience that might need family or somebody that needs that services, it started out as a dental care and then moved into a much higher service of care, but they are located in Cobb, but they've opened the doors to Pauling County folks, so that's available to our Pauling folks. But you've visited some clinics.
Visited some clinics, probably a good eight or nine clinics around the metro and North Georgia area, and just visited again, one door both next door in Cedar Town. So, yes, we've done our homework and due diligence to make sure that we understand what we're doing. And again, there are so many people out there that are very willing to help explain things and guide us, that we just need to, you know, all it is is a call away for those people to help guide us, and to help give us some answers to the questions that we may have. So, yeah, then we have visited those. So, many, most, I would say practically all clinics in the, in the state do not have a one-stop resource center associated with it. This is, I know that they're trying to start one up in Floyd County, and another one in Bartow County, and I plan on visiting with them, but it's basically almost just exclusively just a healthcare clinic. And so, this is really something that we're stepping out with, and hopefully it'll be a model for other clinics within the state to go ahead and incorporate, because again, it's one of those things that, if you want something to be comprehensive and sustainable, you can't just go ahead and treat them for what their ailment is, and then that's it. You know, we want to make sure that they continue on with getting healthier and stronger with this particular resource center.
Greg, anything you want to add to that?
First of all, thank you Commissioners and everyone here for your time. I know what Guy, Guy did a great job explaining kind of what we're going to do, the long-term vision and goal of that. I would just like to speak in a little bit of the why behind this. All of you have heard that, you know, rising tide lifts all sharements, sharements, and you know, one of the goals here with the resource center is to be able to intentionally address those generational poverty groups in our county, where they can't get out of it. I'm on staff at Westridge, this is not a Westridge, you know, sponsored community center, I just, that just happens to be my job during the day, but I also handle our benevolence ministry there, and what I see is you have so many families that will come in, and the tyranny of the urgent literally rules their day. They cannot pay an electric bill, and that's the only thing on their radar, is I need to pay the electric bill. But even Westridge or any other church in the community, we're not going to be resourced to be able to just take a moment and walk alongside those families and say, you know, why can you not meet the electric bill? What is that underlying cause there, that I believe that this resource center will be a great first step in us being able to address those issues? And whether it be a lack of education, you know, I've been in Pauling County since 2001, and I moved from Texas, still a Texan, so you have to forgive me, but I'm still a Texan, but Pauling County is my home, my kids were raised here, this is, this is my community. And, you know, if you guys remember in the mid-2000s, when the residential building collapsed, we had so many individuals in Pauling County that that was their really only marketable skill, is I could do sheet rock, or I could frame a house, and when those opportunities dried up, it created a, you know, a huge deficit here in the county. You saw many families, all of a sudden, not have a source of income, and they really didn't know what to do. And so, our prayer is to coordinate and collaborate with those existing organizations out there, higher education, institutes of higher education, can a family come in and we look at them and say, you know what, you can't get a high-paid job, because let's be honest, you don't even have a GED, so let's begin to address those educational issues there. Partnering, not just creating it in-house, but partnering with those organizations that are existing. I know Dan Purors with Kaiya has been trying for some time to develop a jobs training somewhat aspect of Kaiya. Can we go ahead and bolt on to what he's doing there, as opposed to kind of coming in? What we don't want to do is come in and say, you know, Helping Hands, you've done a great job, but we're going to do it bigger and better than you. What we want to do is come in and say, we have an opportunity here to help provide some food if that's a need, but we also want to be able to direct people to Helping Hands and help resource them, as well as create a network here within the community, as Guy mentioned, that we became, we've become a true safety net solution. And you, Commissioner Austin, you've been, you've been great as far as some other people out here, as far as just encouraging us to go down this path. If anyone has any questions, you know, we can, if we got time, I guess we can take those.
I think this is close to, getting close to a year and a half that's been meeting and drawing attention to this. So, if you guys will make yourselves available after the meeting, I'm sure that people want to discuss with you. Thanks, Kim and Bill. Thank you, and Ashley, thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. While there, getting set up, I've heard Wellstar mention a couple of times, we had a board meeting last night, and planning to have Marquini come and address this group and give an update, but on September the sixth, excuse me, on September the nineteenth of this year, the sixth floor of the new hospital will open up, and then on October the seventeenth, the seventh floor will open up. So, anywhere from a hundred and forty to maybe a hundred and eighty new jobs, adding the sixth and seventh floor, more availability. We opened this hospital up, and on day one, it was completely packed, and the emergency room's been packed, they've been stacking people in the emergency room, get ready to move them to a regular room. So, the board of Wellstar has addressed that program, they're pretty proud that out of five hospitals, return on investment for Pauling is number two, with a mothership, Kennesaw being number one, but outstanding job by our local folks there at Wellstar, so we're very, very proud of that, and we'll get them to do a complete update for us. But sharing some good news today, public participation on agenda items, no one signed up for that, consent agenda, approved litter coordination classification and part-time funding, Ryan Ackery, you're the one that addressed that, or Amber. I guess y'all noticed the signs were red, and recently, I think a garbage truck was discovered by the sheriff's department that was throwing maybe eight bags of litter, and they haven't got it all picked up, so we need your eyes and ears when this takes place, and we're trying our best to keep a clean community. When I read Rudy Giuliani's book and how he cleaned up New York, one of the first things he did was try to clean up the city, and get the people that are walking up to wash their windchills off the streets, and throwing down trash, and throwing down garbage. So, it's important, and we've been needing some help. So it's important, and we've been needing some help in that area for quite a long time to have somebody officially part of Keep Pauling Beautiful and what they can do to help keep litter off the road.
Vouches. I'm submitting this on behalf of Tommy Litter and Major Home. Obviously, they coordinate together in dealing with this, but it's planning, coordinating, developing litter prevention programs, beauty, education projects, working with Keep Pauling Beautiful. It is a part-time position, up to 29 hours. If you'd like to have more questions with them, I'm encouraged to ask, but asking that you fund that.
And is that a budget item that we, have that we fund for the budget part?
No, sir. It was not included in the original budget, so it'll be a budget amendment at the end of the year. It's estimated to be about $20,000 annually, so this will be a quarter of the year, so it's about $5,000 for this grant year.
And will that person report to you, Major Home, or Tommy Litter?
Tommy.
Okay. Tommy runs our landfill and our recycling center, and does an outstanding job. So again, thank you. Any more questions, Brian?
I'm very much needed.
I get calls every week, please, that such and such road to the list to be picked up, and a lot of the time we get it picked up, and it's acting a similar type of mess, and I just, I don't understand people throwing out trash. Number two, approved the purchase of a BC 1500, 15-inch brush chipper in the amount of $52,186 from near southeast at service. Scott, that's for the DOP or for the whole county, or?
It's to replace it. I'm sorry.
We have a, we have a very old machine that was due to be replaced next year, but it was involved in a road accident, had some damage to it. It's not cost-effective to repair at this time, rather than wait till next year. We'd like to go ahead and replace it, as well as increase the size to a 15-inch machine to handle bigger debris and help us deal with cleaning up trees, storm damage, that type of thing.
Any questions, Scott? Thank you. Our own business under new business. Discuss actions about Resolution 16-04, a resolution calling for the referendum approval on renewal of one cent county special purpose local option sales tax, SPOS, for May the 24th, 2016. We have Bonnie Skipper, who will be a part of this, and a capital of Pauling, to tell us the impact of it coming back. Right now, we have a current SPOS in place. It does run out in 2016, 2017, which means we need to vote in 2016 to continue this SPOS, so.
I don't mind going first. Gentlemen, what you have is the SPOS resolution, and I apologize in advance for the length of it, because it is pink resolution, plus it has attached to the back the interregional agreement with Hyrum and the interregional agreement with Dallas. Essentially, what the resolution does is it explains that if the voters pass by more than 50%, the SPOS would continue. It gives the percentages between the county and the two cities, and it gives, within the percentages, how the money will be divided between public safety, parks and rec, DMT, IC, internet technology for economic developments, so fiber lines, essentially what that's been used for. And then the city added a city municipal building request, so that is added in as And then the two agreements just, you know, have that between the county and the two different cities about how their percentages are done and what they've created, money's going to be spent on, depending on which city it is.
We probably had, I guess, three different meetings with the cities for discussion and mashing of teeth, and I think we came up with some pretty good proposals from the city and the county, so doubtfully you want to go?
Okay. And I'm sorry if I repeat something, I was trying to project her to work, so. The city of Dallas is proposed at 7.30%, the city of Hyrum is 5.8%, and the county is 86.9%. The county's portion of projects will be transportation, public safety, recreation, and economic development, very similar to the past SPOS, with the percentages being there. Transportation, 57.4%. Most of those projects are funded, are listed in a comprehensive plan, which was an enormous task that was taken off by DOT a couple of years ago, so they're all listed there. Public safety includes a couple of fire stations and all of our equipment for the fire departments. Our fire trucks generally come from the SPOS fund, as well as the stations, the sheriff's cars, and a lot of their equipment and recreation. The big park is the park at the reservoir this year, and the economic development base is to put copper in the ground, for miniature economic development. Did I cover your question?
I don't think so. We had quite a few in-depth, long meetings concerning it, with everyone involved, and I think that went great. I think when you look at this, it's not a new tax, it's a continuation, but everybody that purchases anything in Pauling County as part of SPOS, so visitors coming through, staying a week or two, or whatever, or adjoining counties, if I look at Walmart on Dallas Highway, it is covered up in Cobb County cars. If I look at the whole area, Home Depot and that whole section of Hyrum, it's covered up in Cobb County cars, Harrelson County cars, from all over. So these people help us with our SPOS, and then what this does is keep down your county taxes as a percent of what you have to pay. So it is a mechanism that without that, it is hard to run a government. There'd be a lot of things we have to do without. I didn't step over the line where they're describing.
Close, but not.
I couldn't imagine what we'd do without. It would be, it would be tough to run a government without it. So any other questions or comments?
I agree.
Okay. Number two, discuss industrial building authority and bond tap.
If it's okay, I would like, I want to do that for you. In May of 2011, we issued a bond in conjunction with the IBA, and that bond issued was to pay for a water tank, the film studio, as well as the hangar. Those payments began in 2013, and with the interest, principal and interest due in August, August 1st, and there is an interest payment due in February. So those payments were made in 2013 and 2014, and August of 2015, I'm sure that you will remember, they actually, the total debt was $483,064. They reimbursed $208,064, with the difference being the $275. In February, they, the total amount due was $174,506.84, and we received a reimbursement check of $49,589.60. And that check was to pay for the water tank, the interest that was on the water tank and the hangar. Unless you have any questions.
In August, was, did they, did they pay everything but $275, or was it $250?
It was $275.
So they paid everything but $275?
Yes, sir.
So basically, we did not fund the IBA for this year.
That's correct.
Which would have been $250,000, I believe, is that correct?
It was in $275.
Was it $275?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so they didn't pay, we had funded them and they didn't pay that, so that was $275. So this, this one now is, basically, we're close to $125,000 short that we're paying this time, correct?
That's correct.
Are there, have we had any conversations, or are there any plans for them to make up that difference, or what are they saying? One of the things that's happening now is huge film production is in the studio, and two different large companies are making plans to acquire the studio, either through lease purchase or through outline purchase. We've talked to teams of folks that hopefully, when the IBA is able to put this and get it in the private industry hands, the people that make films and do it on a regular basis can bring this to fruition and get this off the industrial level. I've had a lot of phone calls concerning this, so basically, right now, we did fund them, we paid $275, now we're paying $104,000, so we've basically got $400,000 we paid. Then the other issue that we met with last Thursday was we paid, that number was $363,000, and that was the airport authority on those bonds, correct?
Yes.
$363 and some change, and there's some more coming in August for that. Basically, we've had $763,000 between those two that we've, we've carried the note for, the taxpayers, right? That's a concern for me. $400,000 for the IBAs, a lot of money, and then we've got the $363 and some change that we've just paid, and that's one of my concerns about the two boards and some of what else we're going to talk about today, so. I understand they got some other things in the works. I would just want to know ahead of time, way before August, what it looks like, whether we're going to have those payments or not in August, because that's a lot, and I'd like to know that before the budget process. I don't want that to get tangled up in the budget process. I think that's what happened this year, and I don't think that needed to happen.
Yeah, I talked to Blake before this, and it's not that they couldn't afford to pay it, and they had plenty of money. He shared with me the balance in the account, and they could have paid it, they just chose not to.
When we look at the condition of Pauling County, and, you know, some of this becomes a political football, I will tell you, we've been through one of the worst recessions in our, in our modern history. We've been through a 500-year flood, we've been through a tornado and two ice storms. During all that, in 2006, our fund balance or reserve, or rainy day fund, is referred to several different ways, in 2006 was almost $16 million. When I came into office, it was $35 million, and today, the reserve fund, as you hear people talk about, is $43,173,000. Now, we're required by law to keep 25%. This actually equates to 68%. So as a county, as far as reserve fund for rainy day fund or for these type of catastrophes, we're sitting in pretty good shape. If there's yellow equipment that needs to be purchased, if there's a great economic development opportunity that comes our way, there's a lot to do with this fund, but it is up now to $43 million. So we're sitting in pretty good financial setting, even after what all that we've been through. We are, we're, I'm thankful for the Board of Commissioners today and the Board of Commissioners yesterday, but. And Tapper. Very thankful. Don't want to take any credit, it is so, she keeps us on track, she does, keeps us on track. And so, very thankful for that, and yeah, it's just like I made the statement, we have the money in the reserves to take care of that, and we did take care of those bond payments, but the fact of the matter is, it doesn't change the fact that we took care of those bond payments, and so I get phone calls from, from folks and people inquiring about that, and those boards are not elected positions. We are, and when they ask us the question, I just want it, I want it to be known and clear that we paid $763,000 and change over the last eight months for their projects that they've done, projects that they chose to do that I didn't vote for. And we're the ones that are voted in office, we're the ones that the people come to and talk to, and I think we need some changes there between those two boards, and I think we need to keep moving forward to make some of those changes. I'd like to see those two boards make some changes. I don't think we need to have the same director as the airport director and the IBA director. And so I would, I would encourage those two boards to sit down and discuss some things, make some changes, and put us in a position where we're not having to do that, and put us in a position where it puts this board in a position where we want to support those. We can't support things that we have to keep paying for. Thank you. I guess that kept on talking.
I think Chairman Austin said it best, I think he said sometimes it's clinical football, and I think some decisions were made purely on politics, not so it's best for the county, and that does need to be addressed. Thank you.
Number three, which is in the list discussed, and discuss actions about Resolution 16-05, a resolution request of Pauling County delegation to the Georgia General Assembly to introduce a bill to amend the Pauling County Airport Authority Act. Ms. Skipper, I believe this was a quest, I've had people ask me, can not just make this kind of request? There's a majority of the board that can vote and make that decision, so that's what they've chosen to do, so you want a couple of?
As you indicated, Commissioner Powell had asked that I'd write something up to request that the local delegation to the General Assembly restructure how the Pauling County Airport Authority is made up, how the members are made. He had made a similar request about the industrial building authority, but I looked into that, and the IBA is a constitutional amendment authority, so it would take a constitutional amendment to change it as well. The airport authority was created by an act of the General Assembly, so it's a little bit different, that's why this resolution only deals with the airport authority. What it would indicate in it is that it would change how the makeup of the board is done, so that there are no elected officials on the board any longer, but that the members are made up as a representative from Dallas, a representative from Hyrum, two members selected by the local delegation to the Georgia General Assembly, and one member for each of the Board of Commissioners and the Chairman. So there would be nine members in total, and none of them would overlap with the existing members of another board, such as the IBA, or even something as like the plan, especially if you would have any members that overlap with this board that are on any other board or authority in the county. The terms of the members would go with the terms of the appointing party, so for the Georgia General Assembly, those members would only have a two-year term, and the members- And the members that each of you would nominate respectively or recommend for nomination would go with what your term is, so they would be staggered four-year terms. And then the mayors of Dallas, Hyrums, the city councils, they would go with the mayor's term, which is also a stagger.
Just like to make note on that, that the, in fact, we've got several people in the audience today that were on the citizen steering committee. And back in 2014, the board of commissioners, basically we appointed the steering, citizen steering committee. We had one for the IBA, we had one for the airport authority. The IBA had two post-commissioners sit on that committee. The airport authority had two post-commissioners sit on that steering committee. These recommendations that they gave us toward the end of 2014, the proposal that Ms. Skipper had drawn up that we've worked on actually is probably 90 percent of the steering committee that was appointed to do that. 90 percent of it is exactly what they requested, the steering committees requested. We did add another member, the steering committee had five members, one for each board commissioner. They had one for each mayor and they had one for the local delegation. We decided to make two and make it a nine-member board. And so that, both of those committees worked very hard and diligently throughout the year. Had quite a few meetings, gave some great reports at the end. And, you know, hot topic issues, the, the airport and both. And those committees were, we had people on those committees that the commissioners and the mayors picked. And we had people that supported commercialization on the committee. And we had people that didn't support commercialization on the committee. I don't know exactly what it would be. I think it may have been a little bit leaning towards, you had more on the committee that supported commercialization. But at the end of the day, what was interesting is both the IBA steering committee and the airport authority steering committee, both came up with recommendations of saying, hey, we need to separate those boards. And they did that individually on their own and through their, through their process. So that's basically what this does here. The members that were, would be chosen would not be allowed to serve on any other board. So we would not have them on the IBA board or any other board. And I think the steering committee worked hard on that. I think they came up with some great things that they could pass on to us. I wish at that time, we could have waited just a little bit longer for them to finish because they were right at finishing. And I wish they could have done that and the board could have taken action then. It's been something that's been talked about all year. And I think it's a step in the right direction to help, help take care of some situations we have going on on those two boards. And Chairman Austin was a part of the steering committee as far as picking somebody. And it was also a part of his plan and I think it's something that we can all agree on.
I'm, I'm in agreement with you. But a month ago, what we said we would do is make sure that all post would be represented when we voted on something like this. So right now, there's not a representative post one. And I think we'd be doing it prematurely. If we adopted a month ago, say, well, you shouldn't take board members and you shouldn't make appointments for, at that time, a commissioner that was resigning to save the county money and also qualify for office. So now, a, a month later, I don't think we ought to adopt this until we, certainly feel like we should be. But I don't think we ought to do that when we don't have post one field at this time.
You make a, you make a good point, but at the same time, the, this would be, if this was to pass this afternoon, we would send it on to...
Right, and I meant to clarify that. If, if you all pass this, this afternoon, then the next step is that I would forward a copy to the local delegation and we have to, the local delegation to decide whether or not they wanted to, to present a bill to the General Assembly. So by passing this, you're not, you're not guaranteeing that the local delegation is going to do that.
Well, we're not, we're not guaranteeing that the local delegation's going to do it, number one. And we're, until they do that, we would not be in a position to be making appointments at that time. The last thing that came up is we were approving appointments for the post commissioner that was not here. And so that came up that that needed to be held off. We're not doing that at this time. I think if, you know, with all the information that's out there that these steering committees did, I would think whatever post commissioner got in that spot, can't tell what that person would do. But again, I think they would support it, just like you said you do. And if there's four of us today that support it, then I think there would be four of us that would support it in a month. That's going to come to us a little bit on down the road if they take it up and do what they're supposed to do. And at that time, we would make appointments and somebody will be sitting here. So I, I think we're good with that because I think that's kind of a different scenario of what we were before.
We're just guessing. And again, if we set stuff up and we say that this is how we'll do it because there's nobody in that post, so we'll hold off on that. And then we say, well, we think we know how they're going to, votes who will do it anyway, does it, make great parliamentary procedure to me. So I, I think all the posts should be here and be represented when we vote.
There's, there's a lot of what you said that I could maybe agree with. And when you make a decision to step out of a post at whatever time you make and you're not representing, the post is not being represented. And that's what it is. My point is that if there's three of us, four of us, it sounds like today, that agree with this and agree with the steering committee's recommendations, then if we wait, we would be looking at a 4-1 vote or we would be looking at a 5-0 vote. But the reason that we waited on the other things was because there's not a post one commissioner to appoint somebody and that's not what we're doing today. We're doing this so that the, we can get it to the delegation so they can have it in a timely manner in order to do what they need to do. And at that point, it'll be their decision to do what they need to do. It won't be my decision, it won't be this board's. And when that comes back, if they run it through and they approve it, when it comes back at that time, then we would appoint those people. If for some reason, there's nobody sitting here at that time, which I think there will be, then we would hold off on that appointment until that person gets here and that person would make that appointment. So I don't think it interferes with what we're doing today. You know, we've talked a lot over the last couple of months about somebody resigning in order to run and when's the, the day, when's the drop dead daddy? When should you do it? By February 10th and do this and do that? It's going to cost the county money. I'd like to see some things changed. We talked about the cost to county, almost $600,000 if somebody doesn't resign and put their name in the hat at a certain time. These two boards have just cost us $763,000. And this is something that I think we all agree on. And this is something that the steering committees agree on. And if anything did come out, they, they both came out at the end of the day and said, you know what? People on both sides said these two boards need to be separate. And I think if we can do that, we'll start heading down the right path.
Again, again, you know, it's, every two weeks we change the rules as how it might be for every one. So, you, you know, if we're not going to vote on something because that post doesn't fill, then we shouldn't vote on something that affects the whole county. And saying, we know how that post is going to vote or well, it will be on the 4-1, who cares? Well, I tell you, the legislature cares. Bill Heath has told me many times that he wants a 5-0 vote or he will not. Put something on the floor of the House to be voted on. So I, I don't go to them and say, yeah, but here's a new situation. And so, you know, again, well, procedurally, that's my fault.
Go ahead.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if we carry what you just said out to this logical conclusion, that today's the last meeting until we get another post commissioner in here because we can't do anything. Business still goes on, things have to be done. This is something that does affect post one, but this is something that's good for the county. And I think we put the county first in this room and I think we're going to head and vote today.
And I think, I've talked to Mr. Heath several times too, and I think they'd like to see a 5-0 vote. Of course, it's impossible to see that today. But a 4-0 vote is a 5-0 vote today because that's all we've got. And if we all agreed, then it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a problem with it. The other thing, you know, people talk about somebody resigning, somebody else resigning, whatever. You put yourself in a pickle up here where you get three people sitting up here, you still got to have a majority vote, which is three. So if you only have three people here and you have 10 things that you're voting on, they have to be 3-0 votes in order to pass. They can't be a 2-1 vote. And I've had that question come up several times. So that's definitely a position that you don't want to put your board in is you got somebody that's not here. Now you've got four, if you had somebody else leave, you're down to three and you could really put yourself in a position where you're not getting things done for the county. So again, going back to that, post one's not picking anybody. We're just sending this on to the delegation. And they've been aware of it, they've, they've known, it's been talked about for probably a year and a half. And I think we need to, we need to do this. I'm just, I'm excited that all of us agree that we're good with it.
Well, that's the conclusion of our regular business session. There's no executive session. Public participation on non-agenda items and personal liberty of future Paulding County.
Good afternoon or good morning. On Friday, when I emailed Ms. Meredith and I asked her if I could speak about the future of Paulding County, there were no problems with that whatsoever. She was very sweet. She put me right on the agenda. However, as of this current moment, I am no longer eligible under Section 261 in public participation, Section 5-A, because I have decided to run for state representative under District 17 and I'm going to win.
Mr. Delmar Phillips, I believe was not able to be with us today. Ms. Stephanie Steele, board commissioners, acting representative of Part 139.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am here to voice my concern in regard to the voted on and approved resolution to support the 3,200-plus-page responsive comment sent by Sidney Austin for the draft EA for the proposed Part 139. I would like to first express my disappointment in our VOC. Why would you ever be in support of any document that you have not read in its entirety? Let me remind you that this responsive comment was written by a Washington DC-based law firm who has no interest in doing what is right for our county. Have any of you ever thought to yourself why any outside entity would spend so much money to support your cause? At the January 26 VOC meeting, I heard someone from the anti-group yell out, "Who cares who paid for it? I care." Do you think these outsiders are involved for the same reason you are? Or could they have outside interests for supporting you and no real concern for how it will affect our county? Why would you also support outside entities in suing the airport authority, a governmental entity, when Paulding County taxpayer dollars are being used to litigate these lawsuits? Does that not seem like a conflict to you? It really makes me wonder whose side the three of you are on. I thought elected officials were supposed to represent the interest of all their citizens according to the oath that you all took. Your oath says all, not some percentage of people who agree with you. Mr. Powell, you quote numbers all the time. In my opinion, you speak, until you speak to all 150,000 citizens in Paulding County or provide the data to back up your numbers, you cannot continue to state truthfully that 70 percent of this county is opposed to commercialization. By my calculations, less than 3 percent of this county's population voted in the May 2014 election for the three of you combined. So let me just repeat that the oath you all took said all citizens, not the less than 3 percent who voted for you. In my opinion, all three commissioners against the commercialization of the airport are repeatedly making bad choices to support all actions to stop the commercialization of the airport at any cost and with blatant disregard to the long-term effects of Paulding County. I hear a lot of talk in this room about doing the right thing. In my opinion, everyone in this room, even the people that disagree with me, believe that they are doing the right thing. I surely would not be here speaking today if I did not believe that. At the VOC meeting on January 26, Mr. Crowe spoke about how it is time to put this Part 139 to bed, win or lose. I could not agree more. I personally am past the point of just being a citizen that sees the benefit of having a commercial airport. My main concern now is the long-term effect your actions are going to have on Paulding County. Your actions continue to bring negative media attention and cost the taxpayers money. How can any of you feel like you're doing the right thing for Paulding when this is the outcome? I will leave you all with a quote by Henry Ford. Leaders do not find fault, they find a remedy. It is time for you to all be leaders and do what is right for Paulding County, regardless of what the 3 percent that voted you in office or the outside entities think you should be doing. Thank you for your time.
Your motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion soon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your adjourn.